Okay, it's seven o'clock and I call to order the September 6th meeting of the Los Altos Planning Commission. For the record, all commissioners are here except Commissioner Samick, who I'm informed is on his way. So, the first question is if anybody is here from the public who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, this is the opportunity for that. Seeing not, I will move on to items for consideration, the first of which is the consent calendar, and we have two sets of minutes to approve. We have the minutes of the regular meeting of August 2nd, and we have records, minutes of the study session of August 16th. Does anybody have any comments or corrections on either one?
I believe that on the minutes for August 16th, in the Commissioner's reports, that I also commented on the special city council meeting of August 7th, and indicated that the city council had decided not to place a competing measure to the Citizens Initiative on the ballot, and instead had directed staff to prepare a general plan and/or zoning code amendments, which I note are on tonight's agenda.
Yes. So, we would like that added to?
I think that belongs on the part under Commissioners Reports and Comments.
Okay.
And, if you're...
I'm done.
Are you done?
Yep.
On that same meeting, on the previous page where item number two, Commissioners' comments regarding 425 First Street, I think my major comment was really that there was not enough information for us to comment on at all. So, I might have said nondescript, but the major message was there wasn't really enough information to comment, and I said that actually the density, the higher density could be interesting to explore in later iterations of the plan, something along those lines.
Any other comments? Okay, can I have a couple of motions, or one?
So, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and, from the study session and the meeting, as with the due corrections.
I second the motion for both.
Turn on your crank.
I'll second the motion for both.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none others, so here we are. Okay. The next thing I'd like to point out is item two, which is the review of 4846 and 4856 El Camino Real, has been continued to the next planning commissions. If anybody's here for that, you get to go home. Okay, with that said, the next item is the one that Anita just referred to, which is the general plan and code amendment relative to the sale of park or open space lands. And we have a report from John Biggs.
Thank you very much, Chair Bresik, members of the Planning Commission. You have an ordinance and a resolution before you this evening. The resolution amends the city's general plan, specifically the open space conservation, community facilities element of the general plan, and one other provision. And what this proposed amendment does is it prohibits the city from selling or transferring title of city-owned properties with a parks or other open space general plan land use designation to someone other than the city. And then it also prevents the city from taking and changing those designations, that parks and other open space designations, as something else without voter approval. And you also have the ordinance in front of you as well, and the ordinance adds to our general provisions section, similar language that is being added to the one element of the general plan, again prohibiting the sale or transfer of those lands. One interesting fact about the, both the ordinance and the general plan amendment is that it does allow for the change between a parks and open space, or parks, a parcel designated parks to a parcel designated other open space, or vice versa. That would be okay, but doing something to another zoning designation or general plan designation would not be allowed per the proposed language in front of you this evening. Staff is recommending that you recommend to the city council approval of the resolution and also approval of the ordinance in front of you. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for John?
When I'm looking at, when I look at this map, there's a really large green area in the county area. Is that city-owned, or is that private?
That's private.
Okay. So, which is the other dark green open space? Would be...
You can see the areas that have the creeks that run through the city. Those have that zoning, or that general plan land use designation.
So, let me ask you, has the city ever had a situation where someone who has a home that abuts one of these parks or open spaces needed, like an easement or some sort of, was an exchange ever made that, it wasn't a sale, but it did affect, I think, what would fall under this, the ownership?
Not to, not since I have been here with the city. It may have happened in the past, but I'm not aware of those exchanges.
Could you give me an example of what you mean by that?
You know, like, sometimes when a house abuts a park, for example, that's like an odd shape, that sometimes there's like an exchange made.
Where they give a piece of theirs so that they get one that makes them a full rectangle instead of one with corners knocked out?
You know, it's, I've been in other agencies where that has happened.
Yeah.
Where there are...
I'm kind of wondering if that would then fall under this?
If it resulted in the transfer of title, then that exchange would require a vote of the people.
Okay. Any other questions for John? Because I have one request to speak from Sue Russell.
I have a few questions, but I think they could await.
To the discussion?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, Sue.
Hi, I'm just here on behalf of the League of Women Voters, and I think you all have our letters, so I'm just here to reinforce that unless you have any questions.
And for the record, I note that Suzanne is here from the Complete Streets Commission, if we have any questions for her. Okay, that being the case, I'm going to close the public hearing, and Anita, since you had some stuff that you deferred, why don't you start first?
On the list, the magic list, this looks to me, and maybe you can confirm, that this is the same document as was in the 9212 report?
By the 9212 report, that's the report that went...
That came to council with respect to the Citizens Initiative?
It is changed a little bit because these were city-owned properties. That list that went to the council for the Citizens Initiative included parcels that were owned by the school district.
Ah, okay, thank you. And the next, I think we all have a letter from Pat Marriott with some questions, rather than my trying to walk through those, can you address those, John?
Sure. It's kind of interesting, but if you look at the top of Ms. Marriott's list where she provides some notes, she first references Grant Park and the 1575 Holt Avenue address. If you look at the land that is part of the park, there actually are a set of parcels that have a single-family residential or small lot zoning designation and general plan land use designation. So, that parcel, that area that makes up Grant Park, does have both of those land use designations.
Does one take priority over the other in any situation?
One doesn't take priority, but they are what they are. I think there would be, maybe a desire on the part of the city at some point in the future to change the zoning designation of the residential parcels to park or other open space, just to make it clear that the use that is there is consistent with those underlying government regulations.
Do we have any idea why, when, and I don't remember when Grant was purchased by the city, somebody else might remember that, like Phoebe might remember that?
No.
No, you don't?
They owned it before I moved here.
Okay, so it's been a long time, and so my question would be if we purchased it prior to the last general plan revision, which was 2000, 2002, why would the land use plan not have been adjusted at that time to reflect this? If, I don't expect you to know that necessarily, John, you weren't here either, but it seems peculiar that there would be, I think, if I count it right, three basically standard R1-type parcels that are listed here, and then you've got the main part of the park. And can you tell us which part of the park are those three parcels?
The parcels, if you look at the, I'm looking at the assessors' map, but your larger map, you might be able to see there is Holt Avenue, and then there is a little sort of panhandle that extends out, and the street name that's adjacent to that panhandle, you can see the three parcels on the map, is Grant Park Lane. And it is those three parcels adjacent to Grant Park Lane, or they're at the intersection of Grant Park and Holt Avenue, that have that residential land use designation.
So, they're not green on the map, they're yellow on the map?
They're yellow on the map. I looked at our zoning map as well, and they have a residential zoning designation. My suspicion is that, and this is just looking at the other lot arrangement here, is that those were part of the original subdivision, and then when the school was developed, the school district may have purchased those lots, and for whatever reason, those were never, never re-designated as another zone or general plan land use.
And so, would those three parcels fall under this proposed general plan amendment and requirement, or, I mean, not saying that anybody would do this, but could the city, if it chose to, basically carve off one, two, or all three of those and sell them without a vote because of the way this ordinance and general plan amendment reads?
Yes, they would not be subject to the general plan amendment and the zoning amendments that are before you this evening.
Okay.
But if, in a month from now, they designated it as park, they could not, if this passes?
That's correct, it would be subject to this.
So, it doesn't require a vote to designate something as park, just to...
Undesignate.
Undesignate it.
Right. You can add to the parklands and open space, but...
And do we have the same situation involving part of Shoup?
Yeah, that one was a little trickier. It appears that there is a small segment of Shoup Park that actually has the R1 designation, and it's even a little hard to see on the assessors' map that I pulled up, but it does have, a portion of the park has that parks designation, and then another portion has that residential designation.
Okay, and I think we've got one other major question. I understand about tiny tots.
Correct.
And there's confusion there because tiny tots is referred to in a number of city documents as a park because I think principally it's operated by the Parks and Recreation Department, so it tends to show up in their jurisdiction, as it were, even though the land use map doesn't show it as park? Is that your supposition too?
The land use map identifies it as the public and institutional...
Right.
Designation.
Right, but it's called a park, it's called parkland in some of the other city documents.
It is. In this list, let me be clear, it was a list of all the city-owned properties, so some have that parks designation, others have the parks or other open space, and others have the, like, public and institutional.
And just to be clear, this ordinance would then control based on the land use map and this list irrespective of what other city documents might say?
It would, it would control based on the land use map.
Okay. And then for the three areas that are listed as park, where the note says these parcels are not listed as parks on any other park list, can you tell us what those are? They kind of look to me like, they're kind of like easement areas.
If, they're actually, I think each...
A right-of-way.
One of them has a piece of public art on it, and it's at the intersection of Grant Road and Fremont Avenue. You have that broad intersection here. They do look like right-of-ways, but they appear to be actual parcels with that parks designation.
Because I'm having, so that's that little tiny, I'm going to call it the northeast corner of that intersection that has a little tree and a green spot on it?
Correct. And then there's one catty corner to that on the southwest corner. So, there's two at that, that intersection.
Which here is listed as the south corner, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the one in the middle, the northeast corner of Fremont, oh no, then there's the one on Springer, excuse me.
Right, the one at Springer at El Monte.
Looking for that.
Up at the top of the map...
Right.
There's by Sparger Way, J Street.
Right.
At the intersection there where El Monte ends at Springer, there's the park.
There's that sculpture.
There's it. You need a piece of artwork, it's just put in right there.
Okay, thank you for all that clarification, John.
You're welcome.
I guess, do you want to comment on this ordinance that we're looking at? You want to leave, you don't want to be...
I can start.
Go ahead.
Okay, and Alex may not want to go next because he's still catching up, but...
For the record, Commissioner Samick is here.
Yes, for the record, that's right. So, to me, this looks straightforward. I understand discrepancies were pointed out on the list, but I actually feel like the, that reconciliation, if there's ever an event that would trigger questions about that, that would be examined at that time. I'm not sure that the reconciliation is something that needs to happen now. It's the principle that's going in the land use and in the potential ordinance, and I support it as is. Let me see if I have any comments. Actually, I didn't even have any comments or questions except on the staff report, so it's not actually that important. The wording in both resolution and ordinance, I'm good with.
Okay. Duho?
Likewise, I don't have any, I don't take any exceptions to what's stated here and what's being proposed, and I would support both resolution and ordinance.
Okay. Mike?
Diddle.
Renate?
So, I'm a little bit conflicted because I don't think we have any reason to be concerned about the sale of any of our parks and open spaces, and I think sort of the past behavior is a good indicator of what can be expected. But I understand that this is like inoculation against Measure C, so I will support it. And I would also encourage that any, you know, commissioner who is involved in drafting or a proponent of Measure C should, if any is, should disclose that so that it's very clear if, that there's no appearance of a conflict of interest.
Okay, Anita?
I support this as written. I think that although there has not in the past been any sale, there have certainly been situations where there have been proposals to use the parks for other purposes, or use what was parkland for other purposes, and we've certainly seen a number of cities in the valley where this hadn't happened until it did happen. And so, for that reason, I support this as written.
Alex?
So, I mean, from a personal standpoint, I agree with Renate, and, you know, we elect city officials and expect them to do a job, and it seems like that's the way that the process should work, and having to micromanage and have all this stuff come to a vote doesn't seem like an efficient democratic process. That being said, we've been mandated to, you know, this is what city council wants, and our duty is to advise. I don't think that this necessarily, and I apologize for being late, and I may have missed this part of the discussion, I'm not necessarily certain that this achieves the result that city council's looking for, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, but I think if you really looked at it, it's precluding sale, I think the intent is there, right, it's precluding sales, precluding changing the use, but, you know, it's a 99-year lease, it's not a sale, but it's effectively a sale, right? And so, I think that kind of loophole still remains. So, as a fiduciary to city council, you know, that would be something that I would want to bring up as something that they may want to look at or as a concern, because, yes, you can't sell land, but, you know, 99-year lease or a 200-year, call it whatever you want, is essentially a sale. So, those are, you know, I support it as written. I just caveat that by saying that it may not necessarily be achieving the full effect that they're, that they're looking for.
Okay. I concur with everybody. I'm not sure that this is necessary, but city council seems to feel like it's one way of spiking the gun, so we'll see what happens. I'll open for a motion on this. And the motion is, well, I just want to make sure that what we want to do as a motion is recommend...
Recommend the resolution amending the general plan and ordinance amending the municipal code to go to city council as proposed.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that.
Ty seconds it. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Zero. Passes unanimously. And the last item on our list is the cannabis prohibition ordinance. And we have a staff report on that, John?
You do? Thank you very much, Chair Bresik, members of the Planning Commission. You have another ordinance in front of you this evening. This ordinance prohibits commercial cannabis in all of Los Altos save or the delivery of cannabis products so long as the point of sale and the company that is selling the cannabis is outside of the city limits. It also prohibits the outdoor cultivation of cannabis for personal, personal use, but it does allow for indoor cultivation, subject to some standards. Those standards are that the, has to be, the dwelling needs to be maintained as a dwelling, and that there is a limit of six plants per residence. That's not per resident, but per each housing unit that's on the site. So, with that, we're going to recommend that the Planning Commission recommend the ordinance that is included as part of your packet that amends our Title 14, the zoning regulations, to the city council. With that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for John on this?
So, delivery is... So, we are not banning delivery, is that?
It's in...
That is correct. If you look at, I just had it marked here, if you look at Exhibit A, under 1482020 subsection B, it has exception for cannabis deliveries. So, they, the actual retail sale can't be located in the city, however, a licensed cannabis retailer outside of the city can deliver the product to residents in the city.
So, this is supposed to take care of medical marijuana?
Yes, or personal.
Other questions?
I have one, yeah. How is the cultivation, the indoor cultivation regulated?
Well, the city's regulations are what we have in the ordinance here. If you look at 1482030, shall occur only indoors in the private residence or inside the accessory structure. I mentioned the limitation on six plants. There, the, for the indoor cultivation, if you have any improvements to your home, they need to make sure that they comply with all of our building and health and safety code requirements. Cannot use gas products to enhance their production. You need to maintain a residence as a residence, having a fully functional kitchen, bathroom, bedroom areas, and so forth, and it needs to be fully enclosed within a secure structure. Those are, those are the rules from the city in terms of...
So, is there, is there a kind of a permitting process?
No, there would not be a permitting process. It would be on a complaint basis if our police department were to receive a complaint that somebody was growing more than six plants or was outside of these parameters, and they would take appropriate action.
What action would you take in someone's home if they have seven plants?
Confiscate one.
The, the other portion of this, this ordinance is that does provide for both civil and administrative remedies to compel compliance with the code, so I'm sure it would be initial contact and requests for compliance, and then we would escalate from that point.
And what, why ban outdoor cultivation on, for personal use on private property?
That I don't know. My, my suspicion is, just hearing what I've read in some of the planning literature of late, is that the cultivation outdoor, there has been a lot of odor problems that have been disturbing to neighboring residents when the cannabis product is grown outside, and it has resulted in some very unusual application of different rules in the past.
I had assumed it was because it was harder to control, because it would be visible.
I think minors, to keep minors from...
Kind of attractive nuisance stuff?
Yeah. The plant itself doesn't...
Among the corned plants.
No.
Less opportunities to control it, maintain it.
Sally, do you have a few more questions?
I do have a question, just, just one. In the first, in the ordinance attached in A, there's a whereas, the second whereas on, boy, I guess the second page of attachment A, talks about not more than six living cannabis plants, I guess if you forget to water them, that doesn't count. No, sorry, I didn't, that's not what my question is, and six plants, and, and you mentioned that that's per household, which it actually does state in Exhibit A, but it does not state that, that way in this ordinance. So, is there a clarification? It just says plants by persons 21 years of age or older for personal use, which you could take to mean per person. I mean, it doesn't say...
Well, if you go up to 1482030A2, it says...
No, I know it says it there, but it doesn't say it in the ordinance. It's more ambiguous in the, in the ordinance. So, my question is, shouldn't they be worded more consistently so there's not confusion? And also, my question was, was the ordinance written that way because that's actually where that AUMA comes from, and is Los Altos taking a more rigorous per-residence stand than the state? Just out of curiosity, maybe that explains the inconsistency or the ambiguity. Do you know the answer to that?
Well, the Exhibit A is part of this ordinance, and I think the ordinance makes it clear that you're limited to just six per-residence. In terms of the whereases, I would have to defer to our city attorney on why or if it would be appropriate to include that in, in the whereases that you noted. You can certainly, as part of a motion, recommend that city attorney consider that and possibly amending it to make it clear in the beginning parts of this ordinance.
Okay, I'm not sure that it's needed, but it certainly appeared somewhat, at least ambiguous to me, but that's my question.
If you have an ADU, do you get 12?
Yes, because it's a separate residence.
That would be my read of this.
No, it's not a separate residence.
It says per-residence, and with an accessory dwelling unit, you would have two residents on the site.
Can I ask, what are our neighboring towns doing? Like, what is, is anyone else passing this kind of regulation? I'm like trying to figure out if Los Altos is becoming the Footloose Town. I'm, I'm like trying to figure out if Los Altos is becoming the Footloose town where preacher's daughter got to go next door to dance.
I, I don't know.
Is any, as far as there are, no one else has passed something like this?
As far as I know, I, I don't know if others in our immediate part of the county have passed rules like this.
Palo Alto has, and they're in the midst of revising it again, for at least the second time, I think.
Yeah.
Palo Alto doesn't allow personal...
Oh, no, in terms of, do they have an ordinance about regulating?
Yeah.
The use? Yes, they do.
Prohibiting it.
Prohibiting...
Commercial use and personal use outside...
They control a lot of things. I'm not familiar with every detail that they have.
I don't think that they're prohibiting, I think they're prohibiting commercial use, but they're not controlling. They are controlling personal use, but they're not prohibiting personal use. That's my reaction.
They're prohibiting sales, though, right?
I don't, I don't think, I think maybe Los Altos is at the middle of the road, or maybe even a little on the conservative side, just from people I've talked to in terms of medicinal use. You know, so it's not put loose and fancy-free. That's what you were asking.
They're not going...
It's kind of, it's kind of in the middle of the road.
And I'm frankly pleased to see the exception for delivery, precisely because of the convenience factor for medical use.
I, I would have to agree. I think it would be unconscionable not to allow delivery, whether it's, certainly for medicinal, but even for personal use, because you, well, you want all these people out on the roads, who are always complaining about traffic. So, so I, I think, plus, you know, you're driving under the influence, whatever. So I think that these, these regulations just make a lot of sense.
Okay. We seem to have a consensus here. Can I have another motion, please?
I'm comfortable with the commercial prohibition, but I think I, we can trust our residents. I'm not in favor of the total ban on outdoor cultivation.
Is anybody else? Well, you can make a motion and see what support you get.
I'm guessing I don't have this support.
But it's nice that you said so. Can I have a motion for this, please?
So I'll make a motion to recommend...
I believe it is to city council.
To city council? I'm trying to see the adoption, or recommend to city council the adoption of this ordinance.
I second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, five, one.
I think that the ban on outdoor cultivation is overly broad.
Okay, so that'll show up in the minutes.
So that would be six, one.
Yes, six, one. And it's Bodnar who is objecting.
And she's objecting because it's too strict, not, not because she is...
On the basis of banning outdoor cultivation.
Yeah.
I want to check out your backyard.
Party that, Renee.
You're welcome.
Okay. That concludes our regular items of public hearing. We now move on to commissioners' reports and comments. Who was at the last city council meeting?
I was not present, but I watched the tape.
Let's hear what you have to say about it.
Probably only two significant things. One is that they did adopt the use permit that involves children's corner. The surprise to me, it came up during the discussion, is that it is for basically, or intended to be for four years. And when it was presented to us, it was not presented with any sort of timeframe discussion, at least that I recall. So that was a little bit of a surprise to me. But anyway, it passed. They had similarly a number of people from the community who expressed the similar concerns as what we heard. And with respect to the downtown...
Excuse me, what was the vote unanimous on that one? From city council? Was it split?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I thought it was four, one, and that councilperson, Pepper, was against...
I'm sorry, it was, you're right, it was four, one. I'm, I'm sorry, yes, Jan, Jan did vote against it, without expressing why. And the other is that, and maybe Mr. Biggs can help with the exact terminology, after discussing whether they were going to accept the visioning report, or adopt the visioning report, or exactly what terminology we're going to use to handle the visioning report. I believe they, the motion finally said that they would accept it as a guiding document. Is that...
They, they adopted it as a guiding document and some other verbiage in there.
Okay, yeah, you're as courageous as I am in trying to recapture that verbiage.
I have it written down somewhere.
Okay, those are all right.
Then can I add one other thing?
Please.
We also had the parking...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, the parking.
And those did not pass on a three-to-two vote, and we were taking the change to the parking dimensions, the floor area that counted towards determining what the parking requirement was for a, a property or a use. And that whole set of recommendations did not get adopted by the council. There was a, a request at the end of the council meeting that we come back for reconsideration with some changes to what we brought to them. So we'll have to kind of go back and look, and look at the tape again from the council meeting and, and figure out exactly what was requested, make sure we prepare the appropriate documents, and bring that back to council for review.
Yeah, there was a, a lot of discussion about the parking dimensions issue, and if it applied only to the perpendicular spaces or not, and whether that had been clear to us at the time we acted, and whether that was really what the ordinance intended, and so on. And so get all of that back again.
So the big spaces are still on the books, basically?
Yes.
Yes. So any project that comes through in the next whatever will have the larger-sized parking spaces. We will have less parking in each building.
And John, what was the rationale, like, what was the reasoning?
There was concern that the eight-and-a-half-foot-wide spaces wasn't going to be adequate to accommodate vehicles. And, you know, there was also questions about, from the city council, about what the purpose of the change was, you know, why that was coming about. And then the other thing was, you know, we have that Exhibit A that's part of our zoning ordinance that shows the dimensions for parking spaces, both the width, the length, the drive aisles, the various angles. And only the perpendicular parking spaces where it were proposed to have the eight-and-a-half foot width, they were wondering about, you know, what then is the appropriate dimensions for these other parking spaces? And do we need to explore that document a little bit further and under what circumstances?
But we didn't intend it only for the straight...
But that was what the committee had recommended, so that's...
But that's not...
Were they, I don't remember. But did they, did the committee intend to differentiate between diagonal and perpendicular?
The, that was the direction I had received, and the kind of confirmation to the council members at the meeting was that the dimension was applicable to just the 90-degree, the spaces, so.
I thought it was for everything.
Yeah, I thought the committee and what we acted on it was for everything, but then when the document went to council and the drawing had a big circle around the, the perpendicular only, and so I think that was why there was some, what would you say?
Ambiguity? Confusion?
Would you say that they rejected it because they also wanted to include the angled parking? Or was it because they're not willing...
Well, there were a number of questions about the angled parking spaces, and whether or not those had been explored fully, and whether the dimensions in that document, the nine-foot width shown for those angled spaces versus the eight-and-a-half or the perpendicular spaces, if those function from an engineering standpoint. And then there was also questions about the ordinance itself, because the ordinance only has one specific reference to the spaces, the dimensions for the perpendicular spaces, but then it doesn't dimension, or call out the dimensions for all the other types of angled parking. So we, do we need to go back and plug in all those dimensions in the ordinance, or...
Where did that even get lost in translation? I mean, I don't know about everyone else's interpretation, but it was meant to apply to all spaces. Otherwise, there wouldn't have been all of the hullabaloo.
Except for the residential. It was, the only exception we made was for residential parking.
And there was, and there was a...
Yes, that's right.
A number of public comments, should I put it that way, objecting to their, this possible application of this to the parking plazas, or the possible restriping of the parking plazas, or the conversion of the parking plazas to perpendicular, and the possibility that that would then result in the loss of the trees, and et cetera, et cetera. So it got all kind of conflated together.
It did.
That's too bad. Lot of hard work.
We will be bringing it back to council at some point in the near...
I mean, it only takes two council people, but you have to wait a, a, some time before you can bring it back.
No, because the, the council is pulling this back up as part of a reconsideration motion at the end, so that...
Okay, well, we wait, we wait that, that policy...
But I think that, I, I want to understand where, I mean, where our recommendation was changed with what went to council.
Or was unclear. It was clear to everyone here.
Maybe unclear, but it sounds like they decided that it was only the ninety, you know, the perpendicular spaces.
Well, that's, that's what we had called out, was the 90-degree spaces, and that was dimensioned. And there was no recommendations from the parking committee on changing the dimension, other dimensions in that document.
Yeah, but we had so many meetings. We had so many meetings.
The Exhibit I remember, with all those different angles and stuff, I thought we were talking about eight-and-a-half for everything, because it was shown on that diagram. I just assumed it, maybe we didn't explicitly say that, but I just...
Perhaps we should have.
Yeah.
It would seem in retrospect.
Though people who would talk about the parking plaza restriping, losing the trees, are clearly pulling off the main concept anyway, so perhaps there's...
We can take, I, I think in all honesty, there's going to be some reworking of that document, and we'll have to make sure those clarifications when we get it back in front of the city council.
Will it come back to us again?
It depends on the degree of change. The council has the authority to make changes to whatever you recommend. But if we develop a completely new ordinance, then I think that would have to come back to you for a recommendation.
Don't do that, John.
And John?
I have my part.
The Hillview project, is that striped at nine feet or eight-and-a-half? Because I know we talked about that with the new ordinance, it'll, they'll have more parking and...
That should be striped at nine feet. Okay.
Okay. Potential future agenda items, we still did not have our story poll item.
That's your second meeting in September?
Okay, that's September 20th. Okay. Any other future potential agenda items?
Yeah, I want to ask if, well, I don't know if this, okay, let me bring something up. So thinking about affordable housing, and I don't know that it's, that this particular item is, is an issue in, in Los Altos, but I was listening to a piece that was talking about Cupertino and Sunnyvale, so it conceivably affects Los Altos, which is vacant homes, homes that are bought potentially from people internationally, paid cash, and they sent, they sit vacant. I know this is a problem elsewhere, particularly, you know, people try to get their monies offshore. So I'd be interested in knowing what our bought and then vacant rate is, if at all. I actually am not aware that it's necessarily prominent in Los Altos, but if it is...
How, how do you determine if it's vacant?
Well, some of them are pretty obvious.
We'd have to go through a, local abatement if they're not keeping up.
And so, and I know cities in Vancouver, you know, get bought up, and all these things sit vacant. And so one mechanism has been a vacancy tax now, so, or a fee or whatever. So what I'm wondering is, could that actually be tied into the, and this is just brainstorming, so it may be a bad idea, but if it is an issue, if we have a lot of properties bought and then sit, which I'm not convinced we do, but I'd like to know, is there a way to put a vacancy fee on that? Because these places aren't then rented out. Some people actually choose to leave them vacant rather than rent them out. This is happening in Cupertino and Sunnyvale, apparently, according to some of these things I watched. And could we tie that into the in-lu fee, that if it's, you know, a residence that is going to sit vacant for, you know, I don't know what the technical details would be, and maybe this isn't a good idea, but is it an issue in Los Altos? And if we had a lot of vacancies that we're not actually being able to rent out, or owners aren't living in, then is there a way to try to work with that?
Well, let's start by agendizing it for your discussion. I think a good starting point, at least in terms of data, would be our housing element. I think that there is some vacancy data in that. And if there's, if it's clear what the source of that data was, we can go back to that source and see if they have any updates.
Right. And maybe we don't really have any, I, I certainly don't, can't point to any, but that doesn't mean anything, and in which case we don't need to pursue it.
Well, but what you're talking about is, we should find out if there's a problem, and if there is, we should be proactive and still wait, until waiting, until it is a problem.
Exactly.
And that was sort of an analogous thing of what we did with the rentals Airbnb.
Yes, exactly.
We went through that before, we had a lot of trouble. We did it proactively, and I think we did a good job, so.
I've noticed a lot of chatter about it on, like, Nextdoor.
Yeah.
People who are just becoming aware of it, that we're not happy, who want to rent their homes for...
Oh, really? Oh, okay.
For short periods of time, but we have a minimum time.
Yeah.
And then one other, this may not be an agenda item, but it's sort of one of the commissioner's report commenter. I know that with the 4856, 4846, that's coming up on the 20th, the developer had offered, you know, a meeting. Is staff going to potentially host such a meeting where one or two of us might come in?
On-site?
On-site, because you've done that in the, well, no, I meant actually here. I mean, we can all drive by and look at story polls without staff.
You have some one-on-one time with the...
Well, I, he had offered this several weeks ago, and I had never pursued it, especially when I saw it was backing up to September 20th. I wondered if anyone had contacted him, and if you were hosting something, you could, you know, cycle us through.
Well, what I've typically done, and I think I've mentioned this to commissioners before, is if we have ex parte discussions, in my opinion, the smart way to do it is to do it on city property with the planner who's involved on the project, and then the applicant. And then we disclose it when we're up here.
Right.
But the idea is that if you do it with someone from staff who is taking notes, it's not a matter of she said, he said, it's a matter of record.
So that's why I'm asking if they're hosting such a thing.
Well, normally, the developer asks, and then we give it to staff if there's time.
The developer, the developer did ask several weeks ago.
So we can, we can arrange that, be in contact with all of you.
Well, Planning Commission got an email several weeks ago.
Well, I think...
I recall getting that.
I think that the developer reached out to us each individually, and then it's up to us to respond.
Not everybody.
Ah, only some people.
I thought it was the whole commission. I couldn't really tell from the, I didn't respond, but I can forward what I got to you.
All right.
But I can tell you that if you go to the Sees candy party lot...
Yes.
You can do a pretty good inspection of what the backend is going to be like. It's just that I have a problem with going to Sees.
There is that danger point. Okay. I believe, unless you have something, John, that you would like to share?
Nope.
We're adjourned.